We have the two of the three candidates for councillor-at-large here. The third candidate, Anthony Patillo, was contacted twice and invited to attend, and both times declined the invitation. So I just want to be clear that we did extend the hand, and it was his decision not to participate. But we're very happy to have Jesse Adams and Bill Dwight with us. And I feel like, you know, stick 'em on the barbie and let's grill 'em, huh? We're gonna start off, each gets a two-minute introductory statement, so doing this alphabetically, we'll start with Jesse.
I'm Jesse Adams. I live on Main Street. I'm an attorney with a law office also on Main Street. I'm an at-large city councillor and the city council vice-president. I have been honored to serve in the council for the past four years and would like the opportunity to continue to do so. When I ran four years ago, I talked about the things that I thought were important, things like openness in government, responsiveness, and fiscal oversight. I am here tonight to discuss the issues that impact your lives and to ask for one of your two votes for city councillor-at-large. I was one who led the charge for the much-needed new city charter that passed overwhelmingly last November, which has led to better overall government. I've rewritten the city council rules in the entire committee system in an effort to make the council more efficient and to provide better oversight of government functions. I drafted an ordinance that requires every decision-making body to have an open public comment period at the beginning of each meeting. My law now assures that every citizen has a right to be heard and speak to the issues that affect them before important decisions are made. It's a step forward for open, accessible government and best practices. I drafted a public art ordinance which will mandate greater public participation and oversight of public art, and I believe it will lead to high-quality public art in this city. Also, last month was the third annual Northampton Jazz Festival, which I am a co-founder and board member. I've supported changes in zoning that allow property owners to have more flexibility with their property and allow for more affordable housing units. I sponsored a key amendment that, along with an amendment from the current Ward Three councillor, created additional requirements for larger developments that will safeguard neighborhoods and allow them to keep their character while fostering new growth to expand our tax base and bring in new, much-needed revenue. My zoning amendment came from the concerns of residents based primarily in Ward Three. I listened to you. I heard you, and I acted. And my amendment protects you. I got it done. If re-elected, I will continue with my hard work, and I will get results for you.
Mr. Dwight?
I'm Bill Dwight. I'm a city councillor-at-large, and actually, let me start over. I want to thank you, Jerry, and thank the Ward Three Neighborhood Association, which of course, I should point out, this is the only forum in which councillor Adams and I even get to talk, and I really appreciate the opportunity to do that, even though the first pitch of the World Series is being thrown right now.
Oh, wow.
Oh, well, case or us or us. I am Bill Dwight. I am the city councilor-president because my colleagues were kind enough to sign me up for that. Now, at first, when I actually was chosen as city council president, I did it with marked reluctance, and have since come to really appreciate it, in large part due to the fact, as councillor Adams talked about, the charter reform that was put into place. And that actually is going to speak, in large part, to my reasons for wanting to continue to serve and why I think my position so far has had some value. It's inclusion, and it is a distinct demarcation of the division of powers. And as council president, I became, I very much appreciated the process of deliberation and the development of polity that we participated in, and it was a learning process that I'm very proud that we've experienced. I want to continue in that respect because I think when we talk about public service, we frequently forget the public part. And that is, we usually talk in terms of you and us, and I would much prefer, and I think we're moving in the direction, of speaking about "we," we collectively, how we participate and how we contribute to our own destinies. And I would like to continue to facilitate that process, and I hope that you'll consider giving me one of your two votes come November 5th. Thank you.
Okay. First question, and we'll start with councillor Dwight. Over the past few days, I've spoken with a number of residents who have expressed surprise and some concern about what seems to be dissension within the Northampton Police Department. In your opinion, are there problems in that department that need attention, and if so, what do you think needs to be done to rectify them?
Well, I mean, once again, this goes back to the charter, and councillor Adams and councillor Freeman Daniels and I have had a number of discussions about this. The division of powers, of course, puts the executive in charge of departmental issues in large part. The influence that we bring to bear is that we are, just as you are, we're citizens. We don't have authority over the police department, although we certainly do have influence at contract time, we have influence at budgetary time. That said, it doesn't mean that we're excused from being concerned. I am right now, given the way this is broken out, which I have to say, I'm kind of disappointed the way it's proceeded, but all things being equal, I would much prefer to see that we allow the process to go forward with an investigation that's being conducted by the district attorney in the Hammond County, and then proceed, if there are policy violations within the police department, that those be addressed by the city's HR, the Human Resources Department, and by the police chief. It is a professional organization and well-run, by my reckoning, and I think, I honestly, without, you know, you would expect this from a politician talking about their city, I do honestly believe that we have one of the finest police departments you're gonna find anywhere. And I think that you'll see this kind of discord in virtually every department, in any business or enterprise, anyone's ever been associated with probably experienced some level of this. But if it's reached the threshold of policy violation and reached the threshold of a crime, then there's a different, then there's a different way to address that, and I have every confidence that we will.
Councillor Adams?
I'm the Chair of Public Safety, and I take this matter very seriously. And I don't believe for one second that the quality of service will be affected while this matter gets resolved. And I also respect very much labor in general. But I also do agree that there is an investigation underway with a district attorney from Hammond County, and we need to see what comes of that before we can really know what will happen. And I also believe that, I do believe the mayor will handle the situation effectively. And the reason why I say that is because the mayor has dealt with other departments who have had issues appropriately. I'm referring to specifically the parking department, and there were some issues there a few years ago, and the mayor dealt with it effectively and decisively. So I have faith in the mayor that he will deal with it appropriately, and I do agree with the council president that if there are policy violations, and of course, if there are crimes, that they need to be dealt with appropriately as well.
Okay. Second question, and councillor Adams will let you start. Should Smith Vocational High School merge with the Northampton Public School System? Please indicate yes or no, and why.
Well, I believe that one of the things we need to do as a government is look to regionalization and combining services with other entities, other areas, other communities. And similarly, with this situation, I will consider it. But here's what I want to consider. I support merging services only when there is no noticeable decline in services after the merger, and I support services that save taxpayer money. Certainly, the proposal will save taxpayer money. So in order to convince me that it is a good idea, I will need to be demonstrated very clearly and by a pretty high standard that the, that any proposed merger will not affect the quality and level of education, because it really is all about the students. Thank you.
Councillor Dwight?
It is indeed a unique asset, and in fact, woefully underappreciated in the community. And to Denny Wolf's point, I actually agree with virtually everything he said, with one exception. He said the mayor wants to get his money back. It's not the mayor's money, it's our money. And the mayor is charged with presiding over that money. The discussion, I'm glad, is engaged. I'm glad we're actually talking about this, for two reasons. One, it actually raises the profile of Smith Vocational. You see that actually people are talking about it and having more attention and paying more attention to it. But more importantly, it's a fiscal issue. It is a fiscal issue. When you get down to it, we are unique, as everyone continued to point out, with two school districts in the community. It is a trust, it is unique in every feature. And that's very much to the good by and large, but with redundancy of some services, it needs to be addressed or at least understood. When you have replications of finance oversight, when you have replication of human resource development, and things of that nature, it is not inappropriate to discuss that. And at the same time, just as councillor Adams said, and I don't think, and I don't think there's a single person who would disagree with this premise, that we need to sustain and help promote the expansion and amplification of Smith Vocational, to our credit, to the community's credit. But at the same time, we can't do it and pretend it doesn't exist, that it doesn't have a potential dilatory impact on our own larger school system and our own larger budget, which is, and 53% of the budget goes to schools in this community. So I'm really actually anxious to see an expanded conversation and discussion and taking in and reviewing what it is, what Smith Vocational means to us, and what we in turn mean back to Smith Vocational.
One of the byproducts, or perhaps unintended consequences, of Northampton's recent development is the apparent inability of many long-term residents to continue to afford living here. Do you see this as a problem, and what would you propose the city do to help stop this outflow?
Yeah, it is a problem. I mean, it is a problem, and it's a problem actually that's borne by success in some level. The part of the, part of the appeal of Northampton is, well, I mean, that's part of, that's the problem, the appeal of Northampton, which is very high. Consequently, there's a desire to move here. Many people chose to live here, which is unique to a lot of communities. I've lived in and grown up in some communities, that's not the choice. Most people are looking for a way out. Many people are looking for a way to get in and/or stay. And consequently, it creates this competitive push that literally does impact people who've devoted their entire lives to this community and suddenly have to take stock and look and see if they can actually afford to continue to live here, while at the same time, living in an asset that's been established by the, by other people valuing their homes. And part, part of this goes to what Ryan mentioned, which is not something that's just limited here, but it's the development of a progressive tax system that taxes you based on your wealth and on your ability to pay, and not how someone values your property. We in the state have abdicated from collecting money from people, from corporations and from wealthy people, talking about putting in the income tax, and all the services are still needed. They're all still the demand, and it's been deferred to towns and municipalities to make up the difference with property taxes, which is a regressive tax, it's not based on your ability to pay. And it threatens the lives and livelihood of people that we need to be part of this community because they contribute to this community, and we could be next, and when I say "we," I'm very close to next, of being priced out of the city of Northampton. And we, I know that the council is committed to making sure that doesn't happen.
Affordability is, in my opinion, the biggest issue in the city. What we can do about it is two things. We need to create new revenues that are not based solely on residential taxes, and we need to look for savings to make the cost of running our government less expensive. When expanding the tax base, we need to do that both residentially and commercially. I've supported, I've supported zoning laws, for example, that are, that have successfully brought in new businesses. Also, a couple of other things we can do to that effect. We can lobby the state to see if it's possible for us to keep more of our meals tax money right back here at home. Also, we can turn our landfill into a solar facility, making money and generating money from that. As far as looking for savings, energy efficiencies are a great way to save. Energy efficiencies are socially responsible, and they save taxpayers money. For example, ESCOs. We hire private companies to come in and find savings, and then they get paid from those savings. And another thing is, I already addressed regionalization and combining, combining our resources with other municipalities and communities, but again, only if that, in combining those services, we put out the same good services and we can save money and maintain the same level of service in that way.
Question from the audience? Fred?
Fred Zinnock, Ward Three, and I've been following the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, and in the process of doing that, I said, "Well, we have two enterprise funds, water and sewer." So if you go to the assessor's office, the rates from 1997 to present for water and sewer are listed on a wall. If you look carefully at those numbers, they increase about six or seven percent per year. So then, my mind went to the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. My understanding, in that case, the rates will be approved by the city council? And my question is, how is the city council gonna vet those rates? How are you gonna inspect them to make sure that the rates aren't too high?
Fred, I've been working very hard on this issue, and you, you and I have actually discussed the matter. To answer your question specifically, the Board of Public Works is gonna present to us, before they ask us to vote on the rate, exactly why, what the rate is, why it's that way, and what the money will be going to. But also, to address your concerns about how can we contain this from being like the water and sewer rate, this is how, two ways really. One thing is that I have drafted an amendment that I have presented already, and it's out there for consideration, actually, I showed it to you, and then that's to create a permanent cap on it. The current legislation has a temporary cap for five years. My amendment that I've already drafted and proposed has a cap permanently. That's what I'm proposing, and that's how we're going to protect the residents, if it passes, from it being like the water and sewer rates, from having those rates go up exponentially, as you've seen on that wall. I was concerned about that from, from the moment I heard about this, and I've acted on it. Another way that, it's important to also know that this is not similar to the, hold on. It's, it's not similar to the water and sewer rates, because this has an exemption for people who are doing poorly financially, and that's extremely important and makes it more fair and more equitable. So I'm proposing a cap to prevent it from being like the water and sewer fees, and I'm working very hard on this issue, and we're also working to ensure that there's as much public process as, as possible on it, and the council president has worked with us too as well on this. And those are the ways that we're gonna, we're gonna safeguard the rate payers from this fee getting out of control.
And I would add to that, since we're gonna tag-team on this, I think. There is also built-in, now, this is a unique fee and an important fact, actually, this is part of my frustration, because with proposition two and a half, as we continue to abdicate funding things through taxation, we came up with alternatives and came up with enterprise funds that are fee-devoted, and the bad, the downside to that, of course, is, and you've mentioned this as well, is the fact that there is the representation, the distance from representation is much bigger. You have an appointed board that has oversight. We are pushing, and we have been pushing, and in fact, this is unique in many respects. We have pulled, we have pulled the sense of the Board of Public Works out in the public, and we've had as much authority on this issue as we can have at this point constitutionally, and we'll probably hopefully go further. The other issue is, one of the things, one of the savings would be mitigation fees. If you're able to address the runoff on your property, that you can offset your charges. One of the frustrating things with this, Fred, as you know, is that water and sewer, you can actually calculate what it is you're contributing or taking from the system. This is a charge for being rained on. But point in fact is, the real, but the real pressure comes from the fact, there is no other way, at least so far that we can see, to subsidize to our, the system that we have put in place to protect ourselves from flooding and from water damage. So we are, actually, I'm quite pleased with the level of discussion that we're having and that we will continue to have on this one particular enterprise fund, which, as I said, is unique, is not, didn't happen with the storm, it didn't happen with sewage, and it didn't happen with water. It is now happening with this.
This is a question that was submitted by Mr. Zinnock to me before the...
So he's monopolizing all the questions?
Well, the mayor is creating an elected official compensation advisory board. The new body is tasked with studying, quote, "the adequacy and equity of compensation benefits and expense allowances of municipal elected officials, and report its findings and recommendations to the mayor and city council," end of quote. What is the current compensation benefits and expense allowances for city councillor? As city councillors, what do you think would be fair in the future?
Well, first of all, it's, the mayor is doing this by charge of charter, just, it's not, this is something that the mayor just sort of randomly decided to do. And this is always, you know, how much do you think you're worth if you're working as a councillor? I for one have always advocated that we should be paid a very small stipend, the reason being, this should hardly be a position that people want to retain because it's paying them well. So far, rock-solid success. But the, the fact is, is that it's been at $5,000 a year, this, councillors make $5,000 a year, I get a $500 bump as council president, which has kept me in salads. The, the, that is our annual stipend. When I was an hourly wage earner, it was a net loss for me. Because, actually, I, when I'd have to take time off from work, I lost pay. And I never cried poor because of this. I think I would defer to the committee, because I don't think that I would offer a good perspective on that issue. But I think, I personally would love to see a sliding scale, because part of the problem is, is that the only people who can run for office are people who can afford to be in office. We aren't going to get a single mother who is working two jobs to be able to run for office. We're not, we're only gonna hear from her from the outside, we're not gonna hear from her on the inside. That's frustrating. You, consequently, you get a lot of people who tend to run for office who are, don't have jobs, who are, who are retired, and that shouldn't be either. So, and we do get insurance, so that, by the way, I should have mentioned that, as part of our, part of our package, we have access to health insurance, which can come out to, in some cases, close to $20,000. And that's unfortunately not fair, because councillors who don't take that package are not compensated as a result. So it's, I'm grateful for the existence of that committee, and we'll abide by their choice.
$5,000, I would likely defer to the committee, but frankly, I wouldn't, I would hope that it wouldn't be raised much, if at all. And the reason why is because, it's not because we don't do a lot of work, we do a tremendous amount of work, from correspondences with the people that we represent, to actual meetings, to drafting legislation, to, you know, you name it. We're going to events, we put a tremendous amount of time into this, each and every councillor puts a tremendous amount of time into this. But I would rather see other departments get raises before us, I'd rather see teachers and, and public safety and all other departments get raises before us, because I do believe that we do it because it's almost volunteer work, not quite. We get the $5,000, that's not nothing, but, but when you think about the amount of effort and work we put into it, it seems like it's volunteer. But at the same time, I think that if anybody should get a raise, we should be the last ones to get one.
Question from the audience?
Jason Foster, right from City Council for Ward Two. Both of you have expressed concern for the increased expenses in the city of Northampton, and how you may be pricing yourself out of the market, just in terms of affordability. What revenue-generating ideas do you have that are not tax-dependent, or the hope of more state aid, to help our city generate income?
Point of clarification, Jason, you mean revenue generation by the city that would bring in money into the coffers beyond taxation, fines, and fees?
Yes.
We are constitutionally precluded from doing, engaging in any enterprise that would do that. Part of the problem, part of our frustration, of course, is the fact that constitutionally, we're precluded from running a deficit and a debt. State's not so encumbered, certainly the national government isn't. The, we, at the same time, we are very limited in how we generate revenue. That's why you often hear people talk about growth, because growth basically means tax generation. But blind growth is not an asset sometimes. It actually has a dilatory impact on the community and its ability to function. That is the frustration of a councillor, and of a mayor, and of every municipal system, because this is the point, all the dysfunction you see in DC is a product of politicking. And where the governance happens is right at this very level, and this is part of our frustration, this is where it happens. We're the most elemental form of governance, and we are handcuffed and constrained any number of ways, with growing commitments, lessening commitments from the state, growing fixed costs, and at the same time, trying to, what we're trying to do is tap a very limited resource, which is the community. And so I would love the opportunity and the means to generate money beyond, you know, neighborhood groups raising money to buy pens for schools. I would love to, you know, convert something into a Ferris wheel and make money for the city, but we can't. We're not allowed to. And that is our eternal frustration.
As I've stated before, I think one of the things we need to do is continue to expand the tax base so that we have new people and entities paying in, both residentially and commercially. And right now, fortunately, there's an awful lot of commercial activity going on in our city, and that's one thing we need to continue to do. I, I support all of that effort. Payment in lieu of taxes. We need to go to the nonprofits who, by Massachusetts general laws, don't pay taxes, or some may pay in a little bit, but none are mandated to do so, and create a program where we go to them and request that they contribute more because they don't have to pay taxes. And there are other good models out there, a lot of other communities have done it. I've actually sat down with the mayor and another citizen who believed in this sort of initiative, and asked if we can get going on this sort of program with Smith, they do have a small pilot program, but I asked the mayor if we could do a request, sit down with them and see if they'd be willing to do a larger one. And I know he wants to, I believe he wants to wait till the new president is in, now the new president's in, so I'm expecting that to go forward, and I'll continue to work towards that as I have been. Also, I, as I stated earlier, another way to, another thing we have to think about is how to save money, how to make the government cost less, if possible. And I've already addressed regionalization, that's something that we need to continue to do, I support those efforts. Also, the closed landfill, turning that into a solar facility or energy park, as you've suggested, and others have suggested, I support all of those things. And again, also, energy efficiencies, ESCO companies, I've supported those, and I'll continue to do that. And I'm open-minded to any sorts of new revenue forms that any, any of my constituents have, I'd love to hear it about at any point. Thank you.
President Reckman has asked that we try to be out of here by quarter of nine, so I'm gonna ask one last question, and we'll go with the final statement. Is that okay?
Sure.
What do you feel will be the city's biggest challenge over the next two years, and how would you propose to tackle this issue?
Who's first?
Again, I mean, the, I believe the biggest issue is maintaining city services versus affordability. And the reason why I say "versus" is because it'd be nice if they, if they didn't clash, but they certainly do. So I'm extremely concerned about affordability, I'm concerned about people who, who live here, who grew up here, who can't afford to live here any more, any longer. I'm concerned about people who have moved away, who would like to come back but can't. And I'm concerned also about commercial affordability and ensuring that our businesses stay here and that new ones come. So that's one challenge, and also making government more efficient, and I've already addressed some of those, some of the ways we can do that, so I'll see the rest of my time.
The, actually, the one thing that will be, an issue that was an issue two years ago and four years ago, and is an issue tonight, that we're making progress on, is transparency and access to municipal government. And to that end, we have been working very hard on that point, and still, there is work to be done. But that also requires participation from the public, and part of the frustration for me has been, while at the same time we expand transparency, we are not seeing a compensatory response from the community in some respect, which is where we need, we need, we're all pulling the orifice, we're all, it's not just, you know, elect me and have me fix the problems. It's, it's just something that we experience collectively, and, and I think that is part of the ongoing challenge. And actually, to Jason's point, and what councillor Adams said, one of my pie in the sky, which I hope's not pie in the sky... one of, one of my pie in the sky, which I hope's not pie in the sky, revenue generation system is a regional municipal broadband system that I would love to see start. And we've already, we're exploring the prospect of that. Is establishing municipal broadband with a gig up and a gig down that they can get in Belarus and we can't get here. And that's because we've sanctioned monopolies with Comcast, and they throttle it and charge you according to increased download speed. We make it a municipal service. We get the revenue, and we share it regionally with East Hampton, Holyoke, Amherst, and, and any other town that wants to sign in. Also gives us a little power and a little leverage with a corporation that's very wealthy, that puts up a lot of resistance. But that actually then brings in and invites in new development technologies. Because access, broad, access to the internet is huge. And that would offset some of the tax bumps that, that discourages other, um, places from trying to move to areas that, that, you know, otherwise might be appealing. And we are enormously appealing. We've discovered that. And at the same time, would give, provide good green, green jobs that pay well, plus fill municipal coffers.